Regular session. Madam Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Commissioner Kathy Sue Petty.
She's excused.
Okay. Commissioner Rochelle Hatcher.
Present.
Commissioner Jake Smith.
Present.
Commissioner Steve Frisbee.
Present.
Commissioner Derek King.
He is excused as well.
Okay. Commissioner Tommy Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Gary Tompkins.
Present.
We have quorum.
Thank you. Next is the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Miller, followed by a moment of silence. Begin with a moment of silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a motion to approve the August 5, 2021 Board of Commissioners' regular session as presented?
So moved.
Support.
Hatcher and Miller, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the July 15, 2021 Board of Commissioners' regular session as presented?
So move Tompkins. Support.
Tompkins and Smith, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next is citizens' time. The next item on the agenda is citizens' time. During citizens' time, the board chair shall recognize any person wishing to address the board. A person recognized by the chair shall approach the podium and state his or her name and community of residence. A person may address the board only once on the same matter during each period set aside for citizens' time on the agenda and only on matters that are relevant to county government. The chair shall control the length of time. Each person shall be allowed to speak, which shall not exceed three minutes and shall not allow negative personal comments. Is there anyone who would like to address their commissioners?
Thank you for the opportunity to highlight an important project taking place in the community of the United States of America. The construction and rebuilding of an enlarged senior center. Four years ago, the Heritage Commons Senior Enrichment Center was beginning an important role to provide a wide variety of services, opportunity for mental and physical fitness, support meal programs, connection with district libraries and technology, as well as some events with the Marshall Recreation Department, and a number of other community services. Senior Health Partners with Linda Gropp as CEO had been a key programming resource. The center quickly outgrew its space and service capacity as Okalon was reaching its own capacity also at the same time. During the development and height of the pandemic, the center closed to onsite services. For many people, the loss of ongoing personal contact was hard to endure with limitations in joining, not being able to join with members of the community in other settings. Now we are in a position of significantly moving forward, and we are asking the community, region, to grow with us. That's our title of our initiative, "Grow With Us," not just Marshall City but surrounding townships and neighborhoods. The big step forward is occurring at the vacant Goodwill Store and adjacent Cash Store locations nestled between the Kowab Community Credit Union and the Dollar Tree. We, Care Well Services Southwest and many civic leaders, want to thank you for continuing to be a strong support over the years and now as we take another step forward and ask you to grow with us. You, the Board of Commissioners, Administrator Scott and Wilcox, and the Senior Milage Allocation Committee are greatly appreciated for your support and steadfastness in this issue of securing funding to develop a new and spacious 10,000-square-foot facility, programming area. Even the installation of speed bumps along the curb, which has occurred in the last week in the Marshall Plaza, accentuates a recognition of the many seniors that will be onsite, either in personal vehicles or the dial or ride program. There is much more to describe, but that can occur in a separate session at your discretion. Flyers and Marshall Community Foundation envelopes are available in the garden level if you individually feel committed to make a donation. Matching grants are promoted from Patronicity. That is a funding matching grant program funded by the Michigan Economic Development Corporation that was used greatly for the East End Gallery recently. Until we meet again, once again, thank you as individuals and as a governmental body for working with this campaign, an important project for all older adults and ourselves as we age in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Thank you. Is there anybody else?
Hi there. My name is Dan Pontius. I'm with Senior Services Southwest Michigan in Kalamazoo and in downtown Kalamazoo. I first wanted to say thank you for your consideration today in the supplemental funding of the senior ramps program. I wanted to talk a little bit about the need, the increased need in that program, and just share a story about the impact that that program really makes in the community. You know, Senior Services has been doing the ramps program in home repair for over 35 years. It's really challenging for many seniors to find ramps, find individuals to build ramps for them, especially at ADA standards and, you know, compliance with the local townships. And we really specialize in that. We've seen a continued growth and a continued need in the community. We don't know if that's necessarily exacerbated by COVID or if it's just that the information about the program is getting more, out there more widely in the community. But we've used up a majority of that funding to date, so we're asking for the supplemental funding to continue these services and get ramps to these individuals that have that need. I think, you know, I can tell you all day what the need is, but I think a story that I actually personally experienced just a couple of months ago really tells that need and how the ramps program really impacts the individuals in the Calhoun County area. So I was fortunate enough to go on a ramp build myself, which is a great opportunity for me to be a part of that program. So a couple of months ago in downtown Battle Creek, we did a ramp build for a gentleman. I was unaware of that gentleman's circumstances until we were almost complete with the ramp. We'd had the platform up and we were finalizing the last portion of the ramp when the gentleman came out. He was recently a double amputee due to diabetes. His son came out with him and explained that his father hadn't left the house in nearly nine months because he didn't have that ability to get out of the house due to that lack of ramp and that accessibility. So I think that story alone just highlights the need in the community, you know, and oftentimes these individuals don't have the funds to build these ramps. They can be costly, and to be able to rent a ramp is really costly as well. So again, I just want to thank you for your time and your consideration in the supplemental funding for our ramps program. We greatly appreciate that. The community appreciates it, and it will definitely allow us to serve more individuals in the community and make a lasting, long-term effect, impact in their lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
Thank you, Chair Frisbee, and members of the commission. It's great to be back. My name is Jim Hatzma. I live in Bedford Township, and our former chair, Art Cale, notified me of our recognition of Ms. Gropp earlier this day, so I was pleased to interrupt whatever I was planning to do and come over and recognize first, let me take this off. I'm unaccustomed to being muffled recently, and all of a sudden I have to become so again. I wanted to recognize both Joanne Conkle, the moniker on the award, because those of us who worked with her know what a passionate advocate she was for seniors in Calhoun County. And I wanted to recognize Linda Gropp, her husband John, her sons and daughter-in-law, and recognize all the great work she did with Senior Health Partners and all the great work she did advocating for Senior Health Partners at the Senior Milage Allocation Committees that former Chair Cale and I attended. Linda, great job. Enjoy your retirement. John, enjoy your retirement with Linda. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Randy Fisher. I live at 1590 East Michigan Avenue in Albion, Michigan, and I'm in Sheridan Township, and I'm also trustee for Sheridan Township. I'm here to grumble a little bit about the roadwork that's been done on my properties and also some of the roadwork in Sheridan Township. First, I'll start with my properties. Erie Road and Martin Drive. Erie Road was razed and widened under a federal grant. That resulted in a lack of proper drainage due to culvert issues on Martin Drive, and the shoulder ditch embankment along Erie Road is not mobile anymore. This is after 60-plus years of being mowed and maintained by the owner developer of the apartment complex that sits there on the corner. There have been two meetings on site. The last was on July 19. We've been told that this will be corrected, and we're still waiting on a plan from the director. As to an update at the 11th hour today, tonight, we received an email, but we haven't had time to look it over to see what the proposition is. The other property is on 29-and-a-half-mile road between East Michigan, or excuse me, East Michigan Avenue and Albion Road. The brush cutting was done all the way down through 29-and-a-half-mile road. The operator of the cutter completely filled in the cabled access drive to my property of brush and trees, not between the road and the cable, but beyond the cable and the right-of-way on my property. The operator also cut the wood brace to one of my posts that flanked the drive, and this was done on July 26. The operator also cut the wood, oh, excuse me, the access drive is mowed and has fence posts and cabling at the road that are fully visible. The trees and brush were cut beyond the right-of-way to 42 feet from the center of the road in more than one location along 29-and-a-half-mile road. The county supervisor was onsite at the end of the day to check on work. Apparently, he must have felt it was a good job because nothing's happened to remove the brush and trees so I can access my property. Why aren't we cutting brush and trees back from fall to spring when the leaves are off and you can see what you're doing? And why aren't we coming back and taking care of some issues? Other issues in Sheridan Township, 28-mile road north, Duck Lake Road. They did regrading of the gravel shoulder, this is north of Albion, along the paved road, and that occurred earlier this year. Much of the asphalt paving along the shoulder was ripped away by the grader, resulting in areas of a traffic lane being less than eight feet wide, and this is the main road from Albion to Duck Lake. Each side of the shoulder appears to be graded properly with a low slope to the ditch line. The west side has substantial ridges that were not graded out and low areas along the edge of the asphalt. It's resulted in the undermining of the asphalt in some locations, which only worsens with winter weather. Some shoulders have a high growth of weeds along the road, and it's become a hazard to drivers, pedestrians, people on bicycles. 24-mile road north Bates Drive North. A year ago, the bridge over Rice Creek was closed by the County Road Commission. Public safety officials must now take a northern indirect road to access properties north of the bridge because of the blockage. No bridge replacements intended by the county, and they refuse to discuss options. The bridge could be replaced using a culvert-type drain, same as spans the Kalamazoo River on 29-and-a-half-mile road in Albion and several other things, and that bridge is used for access to the Equestrian Center, so it accepts heavy truck traffic. There are other locations that use these less expensive culverts, but the County Road Commission refuses to entertain the method. They'll only accept a formal bridge costing millions of dollars to replace it. Filling of potholes. As of July 26, we had not had potholes filled in our township. The update to that, work began on H Drive and 24-mile road about August 2. That's kind of ridiculous to be August 2 before we start filling potholes in our county. There are numerous roads in Sheridan Township that have enormous holes. On D Drive North between 26-and-a-half and 29-mile road, there are holes that are three feet wide and 12 inches deep. Also, filling potholes along 24-mile road in the vicinity of H Drive North has a multitude of huge sections that have been overlaid with pothole patch by hand, as wide as eight to nine foot in width and close to 100 feet in length. The workers have no choice because the road is in such bad shape, it's nothing but continuous potholes. This application is not going to hold up and replace and be required again next year in most locations. It's beginning to appear that Sheridan Township is being singled out with poor workmanship. I'd hate to think that this is a status quo for road maintenance in our county. This can only be the result of improperly trained employees, the lack of supervision of employees and contractors, or an "I don't give a shit, I'm doing my job" attitude, or a combination of all three. I can tell you from my company's 70-years of construction experience and business operations, if we operated in such a fashion, we would not have any customers and be out of business. It's totally unacceptable workmanship. No one can be proud of these situations. All these examples result in callbacks and additional costs and poor customer relations. With funding the way it is, we need to get our money's worth for the maintenance of our roads. It appears that either the person who's ultimately in charge of this road department or the person who's reporting to them are incompetent or both. If this were my company, somebody would be looking for a new job.
30 seconds, please.
Almost done. These issues in the workmanship reflects directly upon the county commissioner's level of acceptability. Is this our county's idea of acceptable methods of operation? Roads on the west side of the county do not appear to be having problems to this degree. Their potholes are filled. Why is the east side getting such poor service? What's going on? I really would like to know if this operational problem be researched by the commissioners and if the chairman of the commission is willing to provide a response at the next meeting on behalf of the entire board. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have some photographs and copies of this if you're interested.
Sure.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for the time. As Senator or State Representative, I gave you a promotion. State Representative Jim Hatzma indicated earlier, tonight we will celebrate this year's Joanne Conkle Service Award Honoree, Linda Gropp. But anyone who knows, who has served on the SMAC committee knows the relationship, the close relationship that Joanne and I had throughout the years. She always baked goods for us for our meetings and always made special, a special package for me, actually cutting off the rear ends of the zucchini and banana breads. I always got the crispy stuff, and she always, she was always thinking about, thinking of doing stuff special for people, and that was just part of her. She was always giving and working to make things better for everybody, but particularly for seniors. I went over to see her the day before her husband Ted passed away, and Joanne was just moving around. She had her oxygen bottle by her side, and she was moving around and doing things for Ted, and there was, I had no idea that that would be the last time I would see her. Just a real quick Joanne story. I had just had triple heart bypass, and Joanne shows up a day or two after my surgery, lugging her oxygen tank. She had a white plastic bag, and her 21-year-old niece, she made her drive from Albion over to Jackson to see me. I opened up the bag, and I said, "Joanne." I said, "I just had triple bypass. You just gave me a full bag of cookies." And she said, she goes, "Oh, hell." She says, "It's not like you're not going to eat my cookies anymore." And she was right. She was, her passion, her toughness will be missed. And Joanne was a special, special person, and despite our age differences, we got to be very close, and her passion and commitment for people and, as I indicated earlier, for seniors was special. And her legacy, she should be very proud of the legacy that is recognized for what she has done, her passion and her commitment, and she would even be more proud of the honorees that have followed her and been named award honorees. And I congratulate Linda, I congratulate Linda and all the honorees over the past few years that have been, have been tagged with the Joanne Conkle Service Award. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Did I see a hand? All right. We'll move on. Special Order of Business. Have a presentation acceptance of the Calhoun County, actually, we'll go back, elected and appointed county official comments. Any elected county? All right. Now we'll move on. Special Order of Business. Presentation and acceptance of the Calhoun County 2020 audited financial statements and related communications. We have a presentation by Nathan Baldorman from Raymond, and then the acceptance of the audit.
My name is Nate Baldorman. I'm the principal on the engagement this year and last year. It's good to be with you this year. Last year was our first back, year back as auditors. And so, again, this was the second year, and happy to be here tonight. I'm just going to be very brief, kind of give you a brief overview of the audit results this year, kind of the audit process, and a little bit of what was different this year. So this year, once again, I want to thank Kelly, Gerald, the whole staff for working with us again. We were remote again this year. Hopefully, next year, we'll be able to be back on site, and things will be back to normal. You know, but we're able to work through things. It was good being back for the, you know, having that second year, being able to work back through things, getting back through, getting back into the groove and the process, understanding what each other needed, those types of things. So we did issue, again, you have the, and I'm not going to go through the entire 200-some-page report, Conference of Annual Financial Report for the county. Happy to say that we did issue an unmodified or a clean opinion, which means the financial statements, in our opinion, were fairly stated in all material respects. This document holds up to the highest standards. This report is, you received for 2019, the certificate from the GFOA, and I would fully expect you would get it again this year. So in terms of overall financial results, I'm not going to dig into different things in the report. My understanding is you've had it and been able to review it. But if you have any specific questions or anything that you wanted highlighted, I mean, in terms of usually what people are looking for is what is that general fund bottom-line number? You know, where did you end up with the general fund at the end of the year? That was slightly over, you had an increase of about $150,000, bringing your fund balance up to 5.2 million, which is about 11% of total general fund expenditures. So in terms of the overall, you know, kind of our part, usually I point people to the single audit because that's where we would have any kinds of comments, recommendations, findings, those types of things. In that separate report that you would have for Single Audit Act compliance, there's two parts of it that we report on. First, we report on the financial statements and the internal controls over the financial statements and in general overall compliance of the county that's required under government auditing standards. I'm happy to report this year, we did not have any findings on the financial statements and also did none on the federal award side. Both of the findings that we had last year were cleared and were adequately resolved for this year. So happy to say there are no findings. On the federal award side, the programs, we go through a risk assessment process, look at different programs, and end up selecting programs to test under the guidance. This year's programs that we tested were the WIC program with the Health Department, and then all that federal money that you got last year, the coronavirus relief funds, we also had to test that. There were several different aspects of that that we had to test, but again, there were no findings on that information. I will say, what's included in here was completely updated. There was, as you probably know, the public safety, public health, payroll reimbursement program was the largest dollar amount, and that program was, had to be prorated across the state with everything that was handled, and I think it was, I don't know, March, April, I can't remember the exact date, when they actually finally got through everything so that you had all the dollar amounts. But we did, we did audit that without any issues. So I really didn't, again, very clean audit, you know, very happy to work with the county once again, but would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right. Any questions? Go ahead.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Certainly, thank you for coming this evening, and what a pleasant, obviously, that you had an unmodified report, findings, which is a good thing. But saying that, maybe I'm a bit redundant because maybe you already answered this question, but is there anything that, even though you have an unmodified opinion, which you found everything, there's no findings? Is there anything that you've seen within in the audit that would have been potentially any cause for concern, futuristically speaking? Anything that you could point to, or you didn't see that at all, which is always a good thing, right?
Correct. Yeah, that's kind of the results with no findings, those types of things. There really was nothing. Internal controls-wise that we saw that was of any concern, so.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Can I have a motion to accept the Calhoun County 2020 audited financial statements and related communications as presented?
So move Tompkins. Support.
Tompkins and Miller, is there any discussion? All right. We'll be using the, oh, actually, a voice vote for this. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Senior, next is the Senior Care Partners Pace Program, which is the program for all-inclusive care of the elderly, and a presentation by Kathleen Kemp, Director of Marketing and Enrollment.
Good evening. How are you?
Good.
As you mentioned, I am Katherine Kemp, the Director of Marketing and Enrollment for Senior Care Partners Pace, and I'm really just here to really drive the awareness around this amazing service that we actually offer to the seniors. I have been a caregiver four times, starting at the age of 17, and then at the age of 32, and then 43 and 45, and I'm 53 now. So if you have not, well, has anybody in here ever been a caregiver? Fantastic. Good. So you kind of understand that it is rewarding, but it's also a labor of love, right? Particularly if you are the caregiver. And so my job is to really take this program from being a best-kept secret to kind of like the talk of the town, right? Because if this was, if I had this service available, I definitely would have used it. And there are so many services that are out here that we just don't really know about, and I believe that this is a program that pays it forward because when we are able to take care of the participant, the caregiver benefits and the community benefits. So I'm going to walk you through a very short presentation because I know I don't have a lot of time. So let me go here to, why am I not in presentation mode? Can you see my screen? Yep, I think you can. We'll just roll it from here. So the things that we're going to talk about today is really along the lines of the, what I call the aging principle. I want to define the pace concept to everyone because it is pretty layered, and so because simple is sustainable, I want to try and distill those layers into a fairly simple concept. Introduce you to Senior Care Partners Pace. What are the benefits of the program and beyond? The process, and then the pace difference. So basically, when I think about as we age, I kind of see it as, aging can kind of sort of be imperceptible. It can kind of be invisible. Next minute, you know, you know, it starts off, would you have a little ache here and... And you're like, oh, I don't remember why I came to the kitchen. And it just kind of creeps in like a vine. But as we get older, our outlook on life changes, our priorities changes, and the things that really matters to us changes. So some of the things like that an older person really values is freedom. And we are not a big advocate of putting seniors in nursing homes. Most of the time, that is kind of like a prison for, for some of our elderly folks because they really want their freedom, they really want their autonomy. Friendships become very important, and privacy is really, really, really essential. So their outlook on health is really focused on, and you probably have heard this from a lot of the folks, your loved ones, that you probably have taken care of, or even if they're not in that phase where they need to be taken care of, they can still be active through fit and fitness. They want to minimize suffering. They're like, you know what? I want to, you know what? Let me age well. They want to be mentally aware, and they want to really avoid being a burden to their family, to their friends, and to their community. And they want to achieve this sense that life is complete. So that takes me to, there really is a need for the PACE organization. PACE really meets that, it gives them that autonomy and that freedom to be who they are without apology. So PACE stands for Programs of All-Inclusive Care for the Elderly. It allows the elderly to remain in their home, which helps to meet their need of freedom and autonomy. And it's effective alternative to nursing homes. Does anybody have any, agree with that? Yes, no, maybe? Okay. But PACE is not a new concept. It's been around since the 70s. I wish I would have known about it, and it's in 31 states. It's for individuals with significant healthcare needs. And this model is pretty innovative, right? It's accessible, it's valuable, and it's effective. And I'm going to show you a little bit more about that as I go through the presentation. So although PACE has been around since the 70s and it's in 31 states, we have four just in this area. Senior Care Partners PACE is located in Battle Creek. That's our flagship. That was our first PACE organization in Kalamazoo, in Portage, and in Albion. And between those four centers, we serve over 600 participants, which is fantastic. But we know that it takes a village. So the beautiful thing about this PACE program, remember I talked about, is this all-inclusive care? When you look at this wheel, I call it like, kind of like our proven process, it actually, the participant is in the center, right? And each participant, here are all the benefits, all of the services that we coordinate for them, whether it's medical care, nursing, rehab, you know, the adult day center, transportation, getting them from their home to the day center and getting them to their medical appointments, home care. And that's just not, just like just cleaning up their home. We also offer personal care as well when we're in the home. So when you think about home care, it's not just cleaning up and doing laundry. It is doing grocery shopping for them. It is some light meal prepping. There's nutrition, there's the rehab. So all of these things, can you imagine if you are an older person and you have to coordinate these services by yourself? Or if your caregiver has to coordinate these services on top of your already existing life, you know, with your spouse or with your children, and you're coordinating these services for your loved one? Or for those who don't have that and you're trying to do it alone? It can be very complicated, it can be very daunting. And so we have the service where we do all of that for you. So who actually benefits? I kind of spoke about this, that, you know, this is a program that pays forward. So when a participant is happy, then everyone else is happy. So the participant benefits because they have a community, right? As you get older, you know, you go to more funerals than you go to baby showers and weddings, okay? And a lot of your friends have died off. And so by coming to an adult day health center, that is their community. They have their independence because they can still stay in their home. I know my grandmother, who I took care of, my great aunt, who I took care of, I remember as early as 10 years old, they were like, you better not put me in a nursing home. And that is just something that you just don't do. It's affordable, and we coordinate all of those services for them. And so when a participant has a sense of well-being, the caregiver has a peace of mind. The caregiver gets to be that mother, I'm sorry, that daughter or that son, right? Because once you are a caregiver, you're kind of acting as if you're their parent. But when you, when you have that peace of mind and you know that your loved one is taken care of, it gives you a peace of mind, and you get that time back, and it restores your relationship with your loved one. And by the way, your loved one, it doesn't necessarily have to be a parent. You could be that one that ends up taking care of spouse or taking care of one of your children as well. And then that goes forward from a community perspective. So I am excited that we have a lot of great referral sources. 70% of our referral sources come from hospitals, physicians, our website, and family and friends. And so when we do a good job there, it gets out into the community that we really are, we really are the best-kept secret. I mean, we do a lot of fantastic things. And I'm going to show a video to you later. It's not that hard to be a part of this program. I've broken it down into three steps. So the first step is just really just verifying, you know, are they of age, 55 and over? Do they live in a service area? Are they eligible financially? Are they eligible medically? And then if all of that is copacetic, then we assess the needs of the participant and the caregiver. And if all the dots, all the stars line up, then I call that, we can do the victory lap because now they are assigned a care team. So that integrated will, that is the care team for them. And the beautiful thing, two minutes, yep, almost done. The beautiful thing about having all of these services for one particular person, like if they go to their regular primary care doctor, that doctor may have a workload of about 100 people. And here, that person, you know, have a much lighter workload. So why choose PACE? Because we promise to be their trusted advisor and to provide customized services for that particular participant. So I won't go through all of this because I really want to get through the video. Dana? We had already had it up, right? And then you can just hear this from the participants yourself. Let me turn up my volume.
I was three years in my bedroom, looking at the same four walls on my back. And it was, this was a godsend.
I used to go to VA. I would never go to VA again. This place comes first.
It's a lifeline. Definitely a lifeline. I'm so glad to be calling here.
There's no payment. The nurses, the nurses come to the house. They do house cleaning. They feed you.
And then they save my life. They're really.
And there's no argument. A lot of places you go to, they'll say, do we have to do that? Uh-uh. PACE will do everything you ask them to do, and they do a good job at it.
They have a hard specialist, a nurse.
They serve you all the time. The girls, they're right on the ball. You just, it's a happy place, I'm telling you.
Whoever got this concept, sure knew what they were doing. They knew what they were doing.
Be with people, we do crafts, we play bingo, all my jewelry. I just got everything I've got on except for my rings. I won at bingo.
And these people provide for you here, senior care consistently and nonstop. Sometime, sometime, I've had as many as six, five or six visitors from senior care at my home on one day.
A good back rub, a good massage. Oh, if you want that, they'll give it to you. And it's wonderful. It really is.
I just come in here to get away from my apartment. First thing I ask them, can I bring my dog? And they had no problem with that.
And that's been my whole reason for me. Is to have a purpose. And this is fulfilling their purpose.
Thank you for the gift of time. We have brought a stack of annual reports that we'll leave at the end of the, of this first pew.
Just real quickly, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Sorry. I just have one quick question. First of all, I've seen your program in person and seen it in action, and it's a great program for a lot of seniors that need that, need that specific help and whatnot. But my one question is regarding, you indicated service area. What do you define as your service area? Obviously, I know you've got two locations within Calhoun County, but what do you, what's your definition of a service area in particular?
Jeez, that's a really good question. There's certain, in each service area, there's a zip code, right? So we have the Calhoun County. And so that includes, that would be Battle Creek, that would be Marshall, that would be Albion. And then we have the Kalamazoo County, which includes Portage as well. We have some other areas, too. Can't even think of them all off the top of my head. We serve like the Berrien County, certain parts of that area as well.
Right. But it's not exclusive just to cities? It's also included, inclusive of our, of the rural areas, townships included?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Any other?
I'd just add that at life care, we provide the transportation. So it is county-wide, and we go to the far reaches of Calhoun County to pick up folks and get them to Battle Creek and Albion, and actually up into Berry County as part of the service area now, too. So they do a fine job. A lot of those folks, if you, if you talk to them on, outside of the video, they'd say the same darn thing. They're very excited to go and enjoy their day there. So thank you.
And that, that video was just done like in, just a few months ago. So this is not a very old video. I'll also leave my business cards as well. I think all of you, I gave a package that has an FAQ in there, our annual newsletter, our integrated will, and our referrals, our referral form. And my business card is in there as well.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Katherine.
Yep.
All right. Next, we have a resolution honoring Linda Gropp, Recercy End of the 2020 Joanne Conkle Leadership Award. And I'm going to have Commissioner Tompkins read that into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And certainly, it is an honor this evening to be able to read this into the record to honor you, Linda, and your lifetime of work. Incredible work for seniors. So this is a special tribute honoring Linda Gropp, where as Linda Gropp retired at the end of December 2020 after directing the growth of Senior Health Partners for 17 years, encouraging health and wellness for hundreds of older adults in Calhoun County, but I would say probably more than hundreds, I would say thousands, I would say, actually. So, and whereas Linda's work in the community has always been about providing service to others, encouraging collaboration and partnership, and providing leadership to important community work. Before directing and growing Senior Health Partners, Linda worked with a variety of nonprofit organizations, including Burdenbrook, the East Central Illinois Area Agency on Aging, the Children's Foundation, and the American Red Cross. And whereas she served in statewide leadership positions, including the Michigan Dementia Coalition and the Michigan's Parkinson's Foundation of Southwest Michigan. Whereas Linda has developed new programs to improve services to older adults in Calhoun County, starting the Annual Active Aging Day, bringing evidence-based programs to county residents as an instructor and coach, helping to start the Elder Education Program within Michigan State University Medical Students, and being an accredited provider of advanced directives, care planning through Bronson Healthcare. And I will also include, actually, the rural Senior Fund and Fitness that you've done, too, as well. And really focusing on the rural education and really health of our seniors in rural areas have been instrumental. So we certainly appreciate that. And whereas Calhoun County Senior Services and the Senior Milledge Allocation Committee have created the Joanne Conkle Senior Services Achievement Award, which is awarded annually to recognize individuals who have given a lifetime of service, providing quality services and advocacy for seniors aged 60 and over in Calhoun County following the example set by Joanne Conkle. Whereas to recognize Linda Gropp's service with compassion, commitment, and generosity to Calhoun County with its older adults, Linda is the recipient of the 2021 Joanne Conkle Senior Services Achievement Award. Now therefore, it be resolved by the Calhoun County Board of Commissioners that Linda Gropp is hereby honored and thanked very much for her many years of dedicated service to Calhoun County and older adult residents. This is signed by Steve Frisby, the Chairman of Calhoun County Board of Commissioners. Linda, congratulations and a well, well-deserved honor. Congratulations. Probably a round of applause for her.
Can I have a motion to approve the present proclamation as presented?
Support.
Have a motion to support. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. So I think we got a little picture-taking thing, and maybe somebody wants to speak?
I know you have a full agenda, so I just want to say thank you to the county commission, and especially to the Senior Milledge Allocation Committee. Having worked with a number of many, many members of the SMAC committee over the years, it's been a great privilege and honor to work within our county and the staff that we've had, and the programs and support we've gotten from every level of our community. We're, as, as Senior Health Partners, and I think I can speak for them after 17 years to say, we always appreciated how well-received our programs and services have been. And I look forward to seeing Senior Health Partners continue to grow and thrive in its, in its new version as it moves into the future. And I, I thank all of you for this great honor. Joanne Conkle was someone I had a great deal of respect for. So I've said to everyone, to have my name mentioned in the same sentence with Joanne Conkle is a great honor. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have our consent agenda. There are seven items. Going to have a motion to approve the consent agenda of the August 5, 2021 Board of Commissioners' Regular Session as presented.
So move Tompkins.
Tompkins and Smith, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Special Committee Workshop and Board Reports. Commissioner Miller? Nope. Okay. Anyone? I just have one update on our hiring process for 911. We narrowed it down to two interviews, which were conducted both on Monday afternoon. They're two great candidates. We'll go wrong with neither one. So we have a tough decision, I think, ahead for the best fit. But we're well underway and should have it completed by our goal of having it done before the end of the month. So that's good news. Anybody else? All right. We have no unfinished business. We have new business. And for that, I'll turn it over to Administrator Control, Kelly Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a few board and committee updates that will come out in my written report for this week. So I'll let you all read that when it comes out later tonight. I just want to point out one, one event, and that is that our 2022 budget process has begun. Now that we just accepted the audit from last year, we're moving right into budget season. Usually about a six-month process, very inclusive. And, and as time goes on, of course, we get updated assumptions and get input from all of our county elected officials, the judiciary, and our department heads. So last Friday, we had our kickoff budget meetings with our Internal Budget Committee and with our Board of Commissioners Budget Committee. That includes, for this term, Commissioners Tompkins, Hatcher, and our Board Chair, Steve Frisby, as the chair. So thank you all for taking the time last Friday. And we went over the assumptions and the long-term forecasts, which we always try to to base our budget decisions for the upcoming year on the long-term impact. And this may be a surprise, but even with the significant allocation of American Rescue Plan Act funds that we will be investing over the next few years, most of that is restricted to response to COVID. Some of it, we do have discretion to bring some relief to our budget, but even with that, we have been facing, some related to COVID, some not, a significant drop in our local revenue sources. So property taxes remain strong. That's very good news. That's about half of our revenue for the general fund. But aside from that, some of our local revenue sources, and mainly in the area of our public safety and the jail, have significantly dropped, and we have typically relied on that source to offset a big portion of the cost for operating the jail and to allow the sheriff to provide law enforcement services. So next year's budget is going to be difficult to balance. We are going to face the need to continue to make the difficult cuts that we have, and we will be recommending some of the ARPA funds to help as much as we can with some short-term stability as we work that through similar budget process, and I'm expecting to have a budget that balances for my recommendation to you in November. So that would be my report, and then with that, we could move to new business. Tonight, we have five items on the agenda. The first one also relates to budget, and that is our annual mid-year budget amendment, put together by our finance staff who are here tonight. And again, this is a process every year that we ask all of our departments to let us know any upcoming shortfalls in revenue or overages in expenses. So those have all been factored in. This is Item 12B1 on the agenda, and it's in accordance with the budget policy that the board has in place, Number 275, that speaks to budget controls, and also in accordance with the annual appropriations resolution. So for the general fund, it mainly incorporates the unbudgeted revenues related to some of the CARES Act, some of the COVID grants, and then continued shortfalls that I just mentioned in some of our departmental revenues. And it does include the hope that we will allocate some of the ARPA funds for items such as public safety salaries and other governmental costs. And then with the special revenue funds, they all net to zero. So where there was additional revenue, it matches up with expenses with no general fund impact. And then finally, I'll just point out, the Road Department Fund also is included in our mid-year budget amendment, and in order for them to continue to meet all of their budgeted commitments, we are including a potential allocation from the ARPA funds that we will ask you to formally appropriate in a little bit to 1.1 million. That's included in the Road Department's mid-year budget amendment in order to have them end the fiscal year in a positive way.
Okay. Ready for a motion? I have a motion to approve the 2021 Midyear Budget Amendment as presented.
So moved.
Support.
Miller and Hatcher, is there any discussion? Commissioner Tompkins, you have a question? Oh, okay. Mr. Hatcher? Okay. We have a new electronic voting system. We're trying to get used to it. So go ahead and vote, please. All have voted, and motion carries.
Okay. Second item, 12B2, is a request that you approve a contract with Aspen Wireless Technologies to provide services that will end up with a feasibility study for providing Internet services to all county residents and businesses. So this is kind of a continued project that you formally authorized us to start in March of this year, when you approved the resolution in support of pursuing this broadband initiative. And the first thing we did at that meeting was also to approve a contract with the Merit Network, who is currently conducting the Internet survey that relates to the yard signs that Lucy has here, if anybody would like them. That survey is very important in order to get the data about Internet, not just Internet coverage, who has it, who doesn't, but the speeds, because that's really important. And with the state's law called the Metro Act that relates to the rules and requirements for local governments to even undertake such a project, we need that data, and we also are required to do some additional steps that we outlined back in March with your support resolution. And that includes putting out a formal bid for Internet providers to respond as to their ability and desire to provide Internet services. And also, we have to have a cost-benefit, sort of a feasibility, to understand, you know, what the options are for funding the project, and it will help us also to seek grant funding that we are really hopeful that will come through from state and federal government to help to keep the cost affordable for our residents if the county is going to facilitate this project. Of course, in May, then, we appointed the task force that Lucy is staffing and Mac McCullough is chair of, and really, this step comes next, and that is to engage consultants to do the feasibility study. Want to introduce Mike Green, who's here tonight from Aspen, and the reason that we're selecting them really relates to our purchasing policy, what we would consider sole source, because there's a broader regional broadband effort led through South Central Michigan Planning Council. We are one of the counties that is trying to at least coordinate and make the most efficient decisions about who we're working with. And Aspen has worked with some of our local municipalities already and is also working with our neighboring county of Branch, and so it really doesn't make sense for us to pick a different provider for this service. They're proposing a fee of 54,000. At this point, I'm recommending that we allocate the ARPA funds to cover that. However, we know that there are some grant funds that could be available through the Planning Council, and if we secure those funds, then we would back, sort of reverse our ARPA allocation and cover that with grant funds. But we really, time is of the essence, and we don't want to drag this project on any longer than it needs to, because it's important. So we're asking for the approval to get the contract started, and then they will be able to take the baton as soon as we get the information back from the Merit Network survey.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the fiber optic project advancement and feasibility study agreement with Aspen Wireless Technologies Incorporated as presented?
So moved.
Have a motion support. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I just have one question. This is just out of curiosity for myself. Has Branch County gone through the RFP process yet?
Mike might be able to answer that. I think they have.
Hi, I'm Michael Reen with Aspen Wireless Technologies from Coldwater, Michigan. I don't need to give my address or anything, right? Coldwater, or sorry, Branch County has gone through that whole process, yes. They've released their RFP and everything like that. Shocker, nobody bid on it, so they are... Yep, that's, you know, that's what the Metro Act asks for. If you have three or fewer, you have the right to disregard all of them. If you have three or more, then they kind of expect you to do something with that. But true to, very consistent with what we found in a lot of other communities, which we did the same thing in Mason County, we're about to do the same thing in Manistee County, we did it in Branch County, did it in Marshall Township. When we built the network in Marshall, here in Marshall, nobody responded either. We very, very seldomly get anything other than maybe a marketing brochure from one of the incumbents, so that's pretty consistent. It's kind of what we expect usually. I'm kind of, I'm a little more cautiously optimistic that maybe the size and scale of a project like Calhoun County might get some real attention from somebody, but I'm not holding my breath, but anyway. So yeah, but it's still a required process. Sure.
Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Miller?
No.
You're getting used to it. All right, go ahead and vote. Everyone voted, and the motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Item 12B3 is a request from the Senior Milage Allocation Committee and from Senior Services to authorize 50,000 in supplemental funding for senior services for the ramps program. You heard some of that during public comment, and Helen Guzzo is here, our Director of Senior Services. So again, this will help them alleviate the growing waitlist and address the increased demand for ramps for seniors throughout the county, and ask for your approval.
Can I have a motion to approve the supplemental Senior Milage Funding for Senior Services Incorporated for the ramps for accessibility program as presented?
So moved, Tompkins.
Support, Smith.
Tompkins and Smith, any discussion? Please vote. Everyone's voted, motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Item 12B4 comes from the Prosecutor's Office, and our Corporation Counsel, Jim Dyer, worked to get this item on the agenda, but it's basically a renewal and approval of the dollar amounts for the grant for the Prosecutor's Office Child Support Enforcement Cooperative Reimbursement Program. So prosecutor is here. It's a mandated service that otherwise the county would need to fund, and so we're very thankful that the state at least provides two-thirds of these expenses. It's actually, I think, a federal grant that passes through the State Department of Health and Human Services. About an $800,000 program, and again, this would cover 555,000 or so, and it's for the periods of the next two fiscal years. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Gilbert.
Thank you. My attorney who handles our CRP unit, Dana Porter, asked me to come and really talk up her unit tonight, so she's probably listening, so I have to do this. It's mandatory for me. It's a mandatory duty to actually do child support and paternities for children that are on state assistance in this state. Our office has, well, has the honor of probably being, if not the best, one of the best CRP units in the state. Dana Porter received the 2018 Assistant Prosecutor of the Year Award from the Family Support Council of Michigan. So that kind of tells you what our unit is about. You figure our county has about 136,000, 134,000 people in it. All she does all day long, and all her unit does with three paralegals, is do child support and paternity cases for the state. And last year, they were out of work for probably three, four, or five months because of the state, but they still managed to bring in over $800,000 in child support orders. The year before that, 2019, they brought in 1.25 million in child support orders. Doesn't mean child support was paid, but that's money that's designated to the children of our county. And if you think about it, 136,000 people in our county, if everyone's paying their child support, that's a significant amount of money going to the children of our county. So I do ask you to approve this.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the appropriation, oops, the IVD Cooperative Reimbursement Grant Extension for Fiscal Year 2022, 2023 as presented?
So moved. Support.
Motion and support. Is there any discussion? Please vote. Everyone's voted, and motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Last item of new business tonight is 12B5, and this is a request for the board to pass an appropriations resolution for what we're calling Phase One of the American Rescue Plan Act, the county's direct allocation, which was 26 million rounded, and we have received the first half of that back in May. It's invested very well by our county treasurer. We appreciate that. And I want to draw your attention to the resolution that I added just this afternoon, because I think that kind of frames, you know, the conditions and the background for the resolution. So as you know, the State of Michigan Budget and Accounting Act requires additional appropriations mid-year if necessary, so that's this. We also have, again, the county policy that has budget controls in our annual appropriations resolution, so we do need the board approval for additional allocations for revenues that did not exist when you passed the budget. And then on March 11, the federal government passed the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, or ARPA, and allocated those directly to local municipalities to the tune of 350 billion in emergency funding for state, local, territorial, and tribal governments to help recover from the economic and health impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic. So the eligible uses I've also outlined in the resolution, there are four broad categories. The first one is to respond to the COVID-19 public health emergency, or its negative economic impacts, which is important. Also, the second one is to respond to workers performing essential work during the pandemic in the form of premium pay. The third one is to help local governments provide our regular governmental services or our allowable governmental services to the extent that we had reduced revenues for the next three years and for the previous year. And then the last one is to make investments in certain infrastructure, and for us, that would really just be broadband infrastructure. So we did develop an initial strategy and discussed that with all of you at the Special Board Workshop on May 29. And then, as we talked about in that workshop, you know, we had already developed some ideas from attending webinars, from getting input, and we have continued to get that input from local key leaders in the community, our nonprofits who have seen the need for these funds to be deployed. We have met with the leaders from our local governments, with township supervisors, with city managers and mayors, and our department heads, the courts, and then, you know, we had some public comment at the May 29 Board Workshop. So based on all of that and the guidance that has been provided by the U.S. Treasury, we are at a point where there's enough information and there's enough urgent need that we do desire to appropriate a portion of those funds, not the whole 26 million. We have a lot of work to do, we have a lot of discussions, we have a lot of more information to come, and most importantly, we want to make sure that we're not duplicating funds that the state of Michigan might appropriate from their direct allocation, which I think is 6.5 billion. None of that has been appropriated yet, and a lot of that could be appropriated to local governments, and so we're, you know, we've built in some contingencies to not duplicate, but we're also hoping to leverage any matching dollars for programs that the state might make available using their ARPA funds, for example, you know, broadband. But having said that, at this point, we are recommending an allocation of just over $9 million, and it is, again, it's consistent with the strategies that we've been discussing. It is, we're also, you know, again urging the state government to appropriate in a responsible way that can help us leverage what local governments are doing, because we can only do so much. And then we've also built into the resolution, you know, just some assurances that there are terms and conditions required that we will, you know, manage in a responsible way to make sure that we're in compliance with reporting requirements, that to the extent that we're allocating to subrecipients or external organizations to the county, that we will hold them accountable to spend these in the purposes recommended and requested, and that the Board of Commissioners will have ongoing oversight through the normal policies that we have in place, through budgetary controls, through purchasing policy, and, you know, the requirement that certain contracts come to you, and also through the regular reporting that we do from our financial statements, we will be including the spending from the ARPA funds so that, you know, you're continuously apprised of how that is and any impacts that we can share with you. And then we're also, just like we do with the annual budget appropriations resolution, we're wanting to make it clear that for our internal department heads and the courts and our elected officials that have requested funds, when we allocate those, that they're required to use them for the purpose that it was designed for, and they're required to communicate with myself and with our finance department if there's the need to modify those. So kind of similar to budget transfer controls. And then, again, you know, external organizations, we want to require them to track their spending, to report any variances, and to just make sure that they're compliant so that, you know, we don't get any audit findings next year related to these federal funds. So that's really the basis of the resolution. Summarized differently, attached to the resolution, I've summarized the proposed $9 million allocation by department. The separate item that was already attached to the agenda item summarizes it by the eligible, the four eligible uses that I mentioned. So I'll give you just a summary in both ways, because I think it's interesting. So out of 9 million, when we think about the eligible uses, about half of what we're recommending is a direct public health response. And so that includes, you know, items like improving the health, safety of our facilities, putting in water filling stations instead of drinking. putting in water filling stations instead of drinking fountains, putting in touchless fixtures in the bathrooms, improving security of our networks and accessibility, and covering public health response, covering public safety costs. So about half of the 9 million is directly in that category. Another third of it, or about 3.5 million, is to reimburse the county for our lost revenues from 2020 and allow us to provide needed services, and a lot of those are in the public safety area. The other two areas, to help with the economic impact in our community, there's about $1 million allocated. And so those are in the areas of increasing mental health and substance use services, the appropriation for that, and then helping out the tourism, the tourism industry. And then finally, there's about $700,000 for the category that helps disproportionately impacted communities, and that's directly related to eliminating blight and starting to work on a broader affordable housing program through the land bank, who will ultimately need to partner with state, federal, and other local partners. So that's kind of the mix when you think of eligible use. From a department standpoint, we have just the one piece related to broadband, and that's the 54,000 that came with the earlier item. But when you think about, you know, internally to help our budget stabilization, it's about 2.5 million plus another 1 million for the health department. We are, again, requesting 1.1 million to reimburse the road department for lost revenues, but only to the extent that the state does not, or other federal sources does not reimburse them. So that's another one, similar to the broadband grant, that if the road department receives, let's say, 1.5 million from the state, the county's appropriation would be reduced to zero from these funds, there wouldn't be the need. If they receive only 500,000, we would want to still appropriate that other 600,000 this year to help them with lost revenues. Where the other external items are, I mentioned the land bank, about 660,000, and then the county fairground board, CCAIS, has both short-term and longer-term needs. And we're proposing, because they were directly impacted by the lack of being able to offer a big tourism item last year, and that's the county fair, that typically brings in about $200,000 net for that agency. And so not having that revenue last year has really impacted their ability to pay for some equipment and other upgrades that they need just to get through this year. So that would be the short-term 200,000 that we're proposing to help them rebound from that tourism industry impact. And then not included in this appropriation, but we also are using our facilities consultants to help do a longer-term assessment so that we can try to give, get them in a position to be long, you know, have a capital improvement plan like the county has, to be able to take care of long-term facilities needs. And then the last external appropriation would be just to increase our portion that we put, we send it to SWIMBA, Southwest Michigan Behavioral Health. As required by law, we already send them half of our liquor tax towards the PA2 alcohol tax budget that must be used for substance use treatment and substance use disorder treatment and prevention. There's been some pretty big cuts in that program, specifically this year, for the prevention programs. And then constantly, our county drug court and substance abuse, our treatment courts are constantly requesting more, and they've also indicated support for boosting the funding for that program. So that we're basically proposing to double or send all of our liquor tax this year towards the PA2 budget by supplementing that with ARPA funds so that we can potentially, you know, make whole the prevention programs and potentially help to better fund the county specialty courts that help out with mental health needs that were definitely exacerbated by COVID. And then there's funding in here to help the courts return to full capacity, including increased training, some temporary staffing, redesign of their workspaces. So I think it, I feel comfortable that the mix of, taken as a package, that this mix of 9 million does go a long way towards long-term sustainability. It accelerates the county's ability to do these larger facilities projects that have been on our long-term plan, and that will put us in a better position. Some of these items just are needed for budget stability, and then I think just the few external appropriations will really have an impact this year to help accelerate the community's economic recovery from the pandemic. So hoping that the board supports the allocation. And then again, we had received about 50 million in total requests and have ongoing discussions, meetings scheduled, and we will continue to work on future appropriations. Right now, we're thinking maybe twice a year, once in conjunction with the mid-year budget adjustment, and once at the end of the year in conjunction with the adoption of the next year's budget. So that's kind of how our timeline looks, and it just, we need you to think flexible about these one-time funds. And I think that we are really committed to deploying them in a strategic way and in a responsible way.
All right, can I have a motion to approve the appropriation, Phase One of Federal American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, funding as presented?
So move Tompkins.
Support.
Tompkins and Miller, any discussion?
I got a question for council, I got a question for council.
Go ahead.
So I sit on the CCAIS board, should I recuse myself from this vote?
I reviewed that question with you, and also a related question for Commissioner Smith, who sits on this, who was employed at SWIMBA. And it was my opinion that neither of you would have had a sufficient financial benefit from passage of this resolution. Neither, I understand you're a volunteer board member and don't receive compensation, so that there would be no financial benefit. And for Commissioner Smith, there would be, at most, a minimus benefit. Even though he's an employee, there would be, my understanding, would, there would be no direct impact on his salary or any benefits that he would receive as a result if this motion carried. So in my opinion, neither of you would have a conflict of interest in voting, and you could do so without accusing yourself.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. All right, I have a motion in a second, any other discussion? I just had one question, and you already stated it. It's all subject to auditing, correct?
Yes, this is a federal grant, so.
Are we able to use ARPA funds to pay for the additional work in the?
Yes.
Okay, great.
I got one more thing.
Yes, sir.
I was going to ask to break everything down, but you did a great job explaining every detail, so good job on that.
Thank you, yes, you did. All right, let's vote. Everyone's voted, motion carries unanimously. All right, next up is citizens' time, the same rules apply as during the first citizens' time. Please limit your time to three minutes and no negative personal comments. Is there anybody who would like to, yes, sir.
Good evening, I'm Richard Porter, 28650 H Drive North, Sheraton Township Supervisor. I want to thank the board for all they do, they've been very supportive, been very good. But now I'm coming to you with hat in hand, asking for help from the board. As you know, we're having solar panels put in Sheraton Township. To put it in concept, the largest solar field in Michigan in 2019 was 400 acres. We now have 4,400 acres under contract with potentially 3,000 to 3,500 more coming additionally. The work will start in September of this year, beginning with building roads and fencing. Because of Public Act 198 and 328, we will be receiving extra funding from the solar companies. I contacted Midsley about two weeks ago, and we're going to have about 1.1 to 1.3 million dollars for roads this next year. We will potentially have 1 million to 1.1 for the next 20 years for roads. He said there would be no help from the county. You have the matching funds, you used it for other township, we're asking for your help. As Randy pointed out, our roads are terrible over there. The fire chief would have been there tonight, but he had another meetings, we had several other meetings tonight. We are damaging our emergency vehicles every run we make. It might be just a light here, something falling off the dash there, breaking our springs on our trucks, brakes. We are damaging our equipment on a weekly basis. That can't continue. When you talk about a road patch and it's 100 foot long, that's not a pothole patch. If you need to see some of these photographs and look at them and explain to me how this can be. I have phone calls, emails, weekly, with photographs and complaints. 28 Mile Road that Mr. Fisher commented on, there was a grant to have that done in 2019. That money was spent to finish up another project on this side of the county. The residents in our township knew that that grant was for that road. It did not happen in 2020, it's not going to happen in 2021. And when I asked Mr. Midsley about it, he said there are no plans to do it. I don't know how grant money can be spent on another location and not where it's designed to be. I've never been in a grant where it's dedicated to one petition, it's not. That road is a dangerous road to drive on. We have 300 trucks, semis coming into Albion a day for Anderson's hauling grain. That is one of the main routes from the north. If you meet an oncoming grain hauler on that road, their shoulder is so broken down, we've had people go off the road, damaging their cars. I personally damaged a trailer and it cost me $1,200. We've got to do something with 28 Mile Road. There was a grant for it, the money was spent somewhere else. I'm asking for the county commissioners to please help and explain how this can happen and how there are no plans to repair the road, because it is very dangerous. And we're going to have an accident, and it's not going to be nice. But I am asking for your help, and as we have these funds, they're going to be here, and we're going to put it to roads. And it's potentially, well, it's over $20 million.
Can you stand, stay after, so we can talk to you?
Sure, and we would love to take a sign and put it, we're a very good advocate at, and it'll be at the Township Hall.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Is there anybody else? Ma'am.
Matthew Hall, Sheraton Township. Just want to give my personal award for most colorful face mask to Lucy Blair, Communication Manager, and corporate counsel Jim Dyer for most coordinated with his outfit, and Commissioner Miller for most natural. Couldn't help myself, sorry. No, what I really came up here for was just to say thank you for approving the purchase of service credit, so I thank you all for that vote.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Cindy Thomas, and I just wanted to say thank you so much on behalf of the Calhoun County Fairgrounds, CCAIS. I know 11 years ago, when we had an issue, we came to you, and you subrogated your position for us so that we could get a loan, and we did well. We have it paid off, we're excited about that, and now COVID hit, we have another concern. And once again, you came through for us again, so just thank you. Thank you for on behalf of ourselves, but mostly thank you on behalf of our kids and all the things that we do and make a difference, not only today, but in their future. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we'll move ahead. Commissioner time. Commissioner Miller.
Commissioner Tompkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First and foremost, I want to, I want to state, talk a little bit about the celebrating centenarians event of Calhoun County Sorobelling Project that was unveiled on July 23. Had an opportunity to be part of that, we had a, what a great, great event that was took place. Congratulations and thank you to all the senior service staff, Kate Turner, Rebecca DeFena, Helen Guzzo. You guys did a wonderful job putting together and really telling the stories of our centenarians, even to the fact where we had one of our centenarians actually show up in a stretched pink Hummer, which was amazing. I sat down and asked her, I said, "What did that make you feel like?" She said, "I felt like I was 29 years old again." So, but no, we had eight centenarians that actually were there at the event. 24 of our 39 centenarians participated. Unfortunately, two of them had passed since we done, since we had done the interviews. So actually, in some respects, those families have some really cherished memories that they can take forward with them. I had the opportunity to interview one of those, Mistel Ingram, and I can just tell you, it was absolutely a joy to have that opportunity. And I can tell you that hopefully we'll be continuing, and I'm sure we will continue to build on this program. But again, I really wanted to congratulate the senior service staff for doing an incredible job. And this is going to be something that's going to be carried around throughout the county, so not only that our, all folks can, but also our students, certainly our youth will be able to see this and really understand the incredible lives that our centenarians have led. So congratulations, folks, thank you very much. And then as far as the Calhoun County Broadband Task Force, yes, absolutely. Commissioner Smith and I serve on that task force, and as was indicated, there is a survey to be had. And I've been going around certainly in my townships and advocating it for it and getting hopefully everybody on the east side to do it, but everybody in Calhoun County, take an opportunity, it just takes three minutes to fill out the survey either online, by paper, or by text. We really want to know what the gaps are and exist in Calhoun County. And we know certainly, I know on my side of the county, they exist significantly. So we're very, very interested in making sure that this moves forward. And I think having that vote on the Aspen Wireless Agreement was instrumental in moving forward. So again, thank you very much for the opportunity, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I'd like to know more about the situation Sheraton Township, when those discussions are had, if the board could be brought up to speed on that situation. I'd appreciate that, thank you.
Chair. And I do have a question.
Commissioner Andrew.
Yes, thank you, because I did have a question, and we kind of went past it. And it was for Mr. Fisher, I believe it was Randy? Yes, Randy, I was trying to take notes when you were talking, and I think I missed one of the streets. You mentioned four streets that, or you mentioned four properties on four different addresses. Do you, could you, could you give me those again? I'm sorry.
No problem. Two of them are properties related to me. One is on Erie Road and Martin Drive. The other one is on 29 and 1/2 mile road between East Michigan and Erie, actually, right there. The other ones were within our township, one was 28 Mile Road, the other was 24 Mile Road, north of H Drive, excuse me, 24 Mile Road, south of H Drive North. One, two, three, four.
You mentioned Duck Lake.
Oh, and Duck Lake Road, yes, which is 28 Mile Road.
Twenty, okay.
28 Mile Road is Duck Lake Road.
Okay.
Yes.
That's probably where, okay, thank you.
And D Drive, I said D Drive North, which connects all the way across, actually, to our Township Hall, which is on 26 Mile Road, so. And I have all this written down, if you'd like a copy afterwards, I'd be glad to give it to you.
Yeah, I might, if you're going, if you're here when we're done, yes, I'll take a copy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I got something to say, so I do feel your pain, Randy and Mr., I do. I think this strongly, we need to look together as a group about letting these townships hire what contractors they choose to hire. I think we're very high priced on a lot of our stuff we're doing. A lot of our steel coat roads last year did not hold up. I know 18 Mile Road north of G Drive, most of the stone was off the road two months later. Marinco Township paid over $36,000 for their half, and they didn't get a good job done. So we can't say quality is an issue, but if these townships are responsible for the payments on, they should have a say-so in what contractors are doing the work. A lot of these townships have got their own road committees now, they can do their own inspections if they want. A lot of these engineers, they're not like they're going out in the middle of a cornfield and starting out from scratch. These roads are already existing, if you charge 20% or whatever it is for an engineer, and 20 more percent for contingency, I think it's ridiculous. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, I just wanted to offer special recognition to a recent sheriff's department employee who used to be my employee too, so Mandy, used to be DeGregory, now Zimmerman, 25 years. And I believe there was another one that went at the same time, Sheriff, what was her name? Yeah, and one went with her as well. Sorry to put. Holly, it was Holly. There you go. So congratulations to them on a nice career and appreciate all their service. All right, claims payable, can I have a motion to approve the Calhoun County Claims Payable for July 9, 2021 through July 27? County Claims Payable for July 9, 2021, through July 27, 2021, in the amount of $28,380,711 as presented?
So move.
A motion to support. Is there any discussion? Commissioner.
Just out of curiosity, this one seems somewhat larger than what we're used to approving. And I tried and tried to scroll through all, there are over 112 lines. I couldn't find a trend. What, is this?
Road.
Something odd in here?
Yeah, it's going to be the treasurer's office. And so this time of the year, large tax-related.
Oh, I see. Thank you very much.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you for clarifying that. Let's vote. All have voted. Passed unanimously. Any announcements? Mr. Tompkins.
Thank you, Chair. Just one quick announcement, that there will be a Talons Honor Flight fundraiser this Saturday, August 7, at Cornwall's Turkeyville, starting at 4:00 PM and going through 9:00 PM. There'll be music, 50/50 auction raffles, and much more with an opening ceremony at 6:00 PM and an air show following. All for a great cause, as the money raised allows for our heroes of World War II, Korea, and Vietnam take an all-expense-paid trip to Washington DC to see their memorials. And it truly is amazing. I know we at the Senior Milage Allocation Committee have certainly been involved in terms of supplying mini-grants to that great cause. And I would encourage, if anybody gets a chance to be out Saturday, to go ahead and really, really contribute to that incredible cause, to see our veterans go back to DC and see those memorials that we, we really honor them as our heroes. So thank you.
Commissioner Miller.
I just wanted to say that we got our fair coming up, the 15th through 21st. We got some new exciting events coming up. Got lawnmower racing. We normally don't have an event on Sunday, the beginning of fair, but I think they're coming out of California, like the pros, they're coming out of there, it's 60, 70 mile an hour. So come on out and get your elephant here and come see the fair.
Are you going to drive one?
No.
No, okay. Anybody else? Commissioner Henry.
It is not an announcement, but Chair, I did want to take this time because I thought I would be, I would be remiss if, and she's probably going to get mad at me, everyone may not know, but I want to take the time to thank Susan, who is actually on vacation, for coming in off of her vacation, in her gym shoes, to help us and support us tonight here. So I think that is really great. And I just wanted to tell you, I appreciate you for the dedication and all the things that you do for us. Thank you, Susan.
I think we'll all join in.
Yes.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. This means.